He's rising to the flag. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice. I will now call the roll. Counsel Naomi Zabat.
Present.
Counselor Judith Garcia. Counselor Todd Taylor.
Here.
Counsel Giovanni Recupro.
Present.
Counsel Leo Robinson.
Yeah.
Counsel Calvin Brown. Counsel Damali Vido.
Present.
Counsel Melinda Vega Maldonado.
Present.
Counsel Ymir Rodriguez.
Yeah.
Counsel Roya Vigeneda, present. Counsel Ennio Lopez. Nine, present, two absent. Uh, the next motion, next portion of the meeting is our public hearing. We have, uh, none here. We're moving on to memorials and celebratory resolutions. I have a resolution in regards to the city of Chelsea affirming moral obligation to protect the civil rights of the most marginalized communities in Chelsea. Chair recognizes Counselor Damali Vido.
Um, Counsel Vigeneta, I have submitted an amendment. I'm not sure if you actually, have you received it in time?
We did.
I would like to submit that as, uh, the new resolution to amend the change since last week.
Would you like to read it?
Oh yeah, sure. Just give me one second. I'm assuming you need, um, a motion from me?
Correct.
I'd like to move to adopt unanimity under suspension if there are no objections.
Let us ask for a roll call vote. Counsel Robinson is asking for a roll call vote.
I'm okay with a roll call vote.
Okay. Would you like to, uh, I'm giving you, I'm giving you the option to read the, uh, the resolution yourself or you want me to read it for you?
Um, I'm, my computer is acting really funny, so maybe I'll just have you read it. Actually, I have it. I have it, Counselor. My apologies.
You have the floor.
All right. The heck is wrong with my computer? You know what? Read it, Roy. I'm sorry. My computer is just, go ahead.
Okay. Whereas, the murders of Breonna Taylor and George Floyd have sparked outrage and protests across the country, raising the same issues as those who protested in Ferguson in 2014 and in Los Angeles in 1992, demanding accountability, equity, and respect from our system of law enforcement. And whereas, homicide is the fourth leading cause of death of black men in the United States, and black men are 2.5 times more likely to be killed by a police officer than their non-Hispanic white counterparts, with black women 1.4 more times likely to be killed by a police officer than a white woman. And whereas Congressman Ayanna Pressley, MA07, has introduced a resolution titled condemning all acts of police brutality, racial profiling, and the use of excessive and militarized force throughout the country. And whereas, the Congressional Black Caucus has also submitted an act titled the Justice in Policing Act of 2020 that mandates cultural training for all law enforcement, bans chokeholds, mandates the use of dashboard and body cameras, reforms qualified immunity, and other requirements for its safety. And whereas protests have erupted across the country and have created civil unrest in communities in and around Chelsea, including our own Black Lives Matter protest on June 7th organized by local young people of Let It Fly Classic in the Chelsea black community. And whereas, as public servants, it is incumbent upon the city council to stand with those demanding accountability and equal representation under the law. And whereas, George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, Philando Castile, Eric Gardner, Sandra Bland, Amadou Diallo, Michael Brown, and so many more remain in the public consciousness and that their memory serves as a call to action to elected leaders and members of the public alike to hold themselves accountable to resilient yet underrepresented communities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council offers its support for the congressional Congressman Pressley resolutions against police brutality, racial profiling, and the militarization of our police force, and the Justice in the Policing Act 2020 and echoes this call for the Department of Justice to reinstitute its role in investigating instances of police departments that violate the civil rights of our residents. And be it further resolved that the Chelsea City Council affirms its moral obligation to protect the civil rights of the most marginalized communities in Chelsea, especially our black residents, but also other people of color, LGBTQ+ individuals, people experiencing homelessness, people with disabilities, and others who have historically suffered from institutional and systematic inequities that excessively criminalize them. Signed, Damali Vido and Judith Garcia.
May I speak on it, Mr. President?
You have the floor.
Thank you. Um, so essentially, this is obviously, we are witnessing a huge shift in the world. There are mobilizations that are happening in every single state across the world and people trying to address many of the systemic inequities that exist in all of our systems. There are calls for defunding the police and looking at the way that we allow police to show up in, in the community about, about the way that the inequities exist in, in local government and medical institutions. And of course, we've seen this firsthand and seeing the way that COVID has affected us. Um, being an environmental justice community, we've seen the way that we've been treated for so long. I know, Mr. President, you yourself have advocated for the noise from the airport. These are things that normally wouldn't happen in more affluent neighborhoods. And I think it's our obligation where we have a constituency that's so diverse, that consists of so many people of color and immigrants and vulnerable communities, for us to stand up and really reflect and think about the ways that it shows up here and how we as leaders can have a hand in, in having some of these conversations and figure out how we can try to change, uh, some of this so that, because I think in many ways Chelsea leads on, on many fronts. And I also think that there's also work left to do. So I think it's important for us to stand in solidarity. Uh, we saw what the young people, um, what, what they've been able to organize across this country. But what they did yesterday, from one day to another, they were able to organize is there's a need for it. Um, we had hundreds of people really just calling for change. They had a list of asks. Many of those asks were reflected in the Congressional Black Caucus, um, act that was submitted today. So I, I think this is a, an opportunity for us to be on the right side of history. And I hope that my counselors could, um, join me in supporting it. Thank you.
I can speak.
Counsel Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, first of all, it is an honor to co-sponsor this with my colleague Damali Vido. Um, I believe that, you know, what we presence and what we witnessed yesterday was historic. It was absolutely powerful to see how youth guided by the Chelsea black community were able to take over our streets. We saw neighbors who supported this movement and opportunity now as local elected officials to really have an impact in our community. We know that the conversation at the federal level is really focusing on tackling these systemic injustices that are going on. And, and unfortunately, that our black brothers and sisters are experiencing firsthand. And this didn't start last week. This has been happening for years. And we have the opportunity right now, not to go back to normal, but to build something better. And what other way than doing this here locally? I know that a wise man from Boston once said that all politics is local. And I know that some folks may think that this is too controversial, that this is something that in local council boards, we should not be talking about. And I actually challenge that. I believe that this is exactly where things should be happening. And this is exactly where we have the opportunity to have the most impact in communities of color and communities that have been underserved. Yesterday, we heard the testimonies, not only of our colleague Damali, who experienced police brutality, but also as black folks have been unfortunate, unfortunate victims of, of police brutality. So, um, again, I hope that my colleagues will join as well on supporting this measure. And not only this resolution, but policies going forward that can really bring some systemic change to the city. So I challenge everyone to, because this does not end with a Facebook post or showing up to a march or a protest. This has to be continuous and it has to be constant. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Melinda Vega Maldonado.
Good evening, counselors and community members. Um, today I will share a statement that I have prepared in response to this resolution. First and foremost, I would like to disclose for those of you that may not already be aware, um, the wife of a Latino Chelsea police officer. Um, as a lifelong resident of Chelsea, I am part of our Chelsea Police Department and its values of building strong and trusting relationships with the community members. While I do believe, like many, there is room for improvement. I believe Chelsea, the Chelsea Police Department has done an incredible job thus far. Having that said, as a Latina, I support this resolution because I stand against police brutality. I stand in solidarity with the Black Lives Matter movement. Unfortunately, we live in a world where race and color matters. Racism is real. And as leaders, we need to dismantle the systems that continue to oppress us and build equitable policies for our city. We need to do what's right and just. I urge us to continue working as a united front to make real change. The peaceful protest that occurred yesterday was a prime example of what can be done if we work together to fight against systemic injustices. I'm gonna get a little personal, okay? I wanna live in a world where as a mother of two Latino boys, I don't have to advise them to not wear a hoodie, to not place their hands on a steering wheel upon being pulled over if, so police officers don't assume they are dangerous. Nor do I want to live where my five-year-old, who loves his father and believes that his father's role as a police officer is to protect and keep our community safe, and yet is being picked on at school for, for having a pig as the father. I hope to live in a world where everyone trusts all law enforcement without fear. Most importantly, where your life is not in danger because you're living while black. There is a lot of work to be done. And this resolution is the beginning of an imperative and essential conversation. Thank you.
Counsel Recupro.
As a father of Spanish children and a father of police officers, it's, I see firsthand what racism can do. And it's up to the legislators and the people themselves to change. They are the ones that need to be changed, that need to be before. And the way to do it is, call the Congresswoman, call all the city officials, whatever you can. That's the only way you're ever gonna change. You've been around for so long that it's very hard to get ready. The only way that people can change it is to, you know, make your way withstanding. Give me against police and against blacks, but we both, we know, we need police to protect us. And we need more, more injustice for all. So the only way for us to do that is through the legislative system. For that to reform, reform the way it's done.
Has joined the meeting.
And change the land. If that doesn't change to the legislative system and to the people who follow, that is never gonna change. The way we're standing, can protests that tell the rules there, not that we'll change. We, the people, have to stand up and be counted. If they don't wanna listen to what we say, we vote them out. And then maybe they will listen and maybe the party will hold. Because we all have different needs and we all need to be respected and have equality. Thank you.
Counsel Robinson.
I will be supporting the resolution. I have walked these streets, you know, I've walked, been involved since 1963 going to Washington and supporting Martin Luther King. So this has been happening for a long time. I will be supporting the resolution. I will be putting something in at the next meeting in regards to Justice in Policing Act, which I think is very, very important, was done by the Black Caucus. But I also would like to read a statement that I put together. But before that, I think as a community, we should be very proud of what happened yesterday. But beyond that, the police were not out here with riot gear and things of that nature. Everything went very smooth. So my statement is, the Chelsea Community Policing Strategy has proven to be highly effective. It focuses on understanding residents' issues in their entire area. Places emphasis on crime prevention to involve citizens in both understanding problems in our neighborhoods and the city, as well as finding solutions for them. These efforts have resulted in mutual respect and confidence in our police department's effectiveness in both in increasing in crime reporting and a decrease in the crime rate. Knowing our local BICUP enables residents to feel more comfortable reporting crimes and, and going to the police for help. Also, knowledge of the local community in which they serve allows police officers to intervene early in discouraged criminal activities. And through my lifetime, I've always managed to come to the table with the police and, and do some things. And, and as you know, uh, I was a leader of getting minorities, both police and fighter departments in the city of Chelsea. Uh, so I just wanted to read that statement because I think it's very important that we do support our local police.
Uh, is there anyone else? Counsel Todd Taylor.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. So I just wanted to read some comments that I, that I wrote down, um, for this meeting. So I was happy yesterday to march with all my colleagues, and I believe everybody was there, to remember George Floyd and to unequivocally condemn racial injustice in all of its forms. I believe that we need a meaningful national discourse in order to solve the problems of racial inequities in our justice system. As a practical matter, we need a justice system where communities of color have a choice in it. I grew up in Arizona, okay? Barry Goldwater was our senator. And in 1964, at his acceptance speech at the Republican National Convention, he famously said extremism in the defense of liberty is no vice. But it's the next line in that speech that's very apropos here. He said, "And let me also remind you, the moderation in the pursuit of justice is no virtue." Those words are true then, and they're true now. I'm all for having ongoing conversations and doing whatever needs to be done in a substantial way that forwards these goals. I am still resolved to vote against all political resolutions, especially resolutions that are to support another resolution. So I will be voting no on the resolution because I have pledged to vote no on all resolutions. But I stand, as I did yesterday with the Chelsea black community, against racial injustice. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes?
I don't necessarily wanna say any, I don't wanna speak again. I just wanted to let Counsel Robinson know that the amendment does include the Justice in Policy Act, uh, that Congress, the Congressional Black Caucus did submit today. I just wanted him to know that. Okay.
Well, I, I, I do, I do understand that, but I think not recognizing the chairperson from the Black Caucus, Kevin Bass and Senator Cory Booker and Kamala Harris and Gerald Nadler, I think is a little misleading as to the resolution. I mean, singling out one, one person when it was more than one person to make this thing happen. That's all, that's my point, is everybody should have got a little credit on it.
My apologies. I was focusing on the content.
Okay. I wanna start off first by saying there's may have been some misunderstanding by, uh, this matter being in front of us today versus last week. Um, as some may understand or may not understand, um, this was first introduced last week, uh, rather late. And by late, I mean the day of the meeting. And for those who are not aware, um, our city council has a book of rules, basically. And in those rules, we abide by stating that, uh, any orders are, have to be in, uh, by the Wednesday before the meeting, um, for a couple of reasons. One, it's administrative reason because we wanna have, at the time, we wanted our Dent Secretary Lydia Coco have enough time to be able to get all the packets together and then have our, uh, city clerk Paul Pacino put everything together and delivered in a timely fashion for all counselors to receive on Friday, um, and be able to review everything with time. Um, second, and more importantly, um, it's because we do it so that there is full transparency for the public so that when we release our notice of the agenda, all matters that will be considered and all matters that can, the public can weigh in on are, are there for them to see. So that's just a little bit. I, I wanna make sure that, uh, there's no sort of understanding that, um, I myself was, was for or against the matter itself. Um, it was just, uh, a, a policy that has been in place for a while and I was just following that. Now, and if anyone wants to talk to me about, you know, my position and, and where I am as an ally or a foe on this matter, I feel open to discuss it. Um, that being said, um, it's, I wanna make sure that we have this dialogue. And I'm glad that this was brought up, um, both here and what we saw out in public. Part of the dialogue is to say, let's recognize at least what Chelsea is. And it was mentioned earlier about the work that the, the city police is and also where the, the city of Chelsea is altogether. Um, there have been some calls in this discussion about where the resources are of funding and maybe funding away from police and maybe to other programs so that homelessness and mental illness and the such are not criminalized and, and, and treated in a different way than just to depend solely on the criminal justice program. Let's recognize that our previous city manager and our current city manager, you know, through the police department and such, created the hub network here in the city of Chelsea. And that this city council has for years funded what we will call street coordinators. And that they work with the nonprofits in the city of Chelsea to try to a, address homelessness and repeat crime. So again, it's not just depending upon the police department. And that this model is being, or this hub network is being used and now explored in other communities. And Chelsea should be recognized for that, uh, for that work. Um, and that we're, we are different. And maybe it's because we are small and that we're able to try things and that other communities can see us as the test lab, but I wanna recognize that. I also wanna recognize it's true. There are police officers out there that have certain biases and attitudes. And the key to that is, you know, good recruitment and vetting by a police department. It goes without saying that we should give some credit to both the chief and Sergeant Filippo, um, Flippin', sorry, Flippin', about what we have as far as the quality of the men that we have in the city of Chelsea. And I don't think that they get enough credit for trying to weed out what potentially could be problems for our community, for our residents. And also that, that one case that I can think of in the last few years where someone, there was a little, some police brutality, it was handed, handled quickly and I think to everyone's satisfaction, that individual was let go. I want to say that, you know, as I reflect to, directly to the Black community in Chelsea, that in myself, along with my colleagues, you have an ally in me. You have an ally that will stand and support these measures and I will support my colleagues for some reform and I look forward to the discussion. I said a week ago that, you know, I have four bullies and I will be out there to, you know, to cry out when I see it. I talked about the Dee Brown incident last time we spoke about this in our conversation. That was in Wellesley, Massachusetts. I was there going to Baptist College and I played pickup basketball, believe it or not, with Dee Brown. It was a great experience. And I remember when he got, you know, thrown to the ground for a suspected bank robbery. Yesterday, I happened to drive by Wellesley again. And yesterday, in the center of town, at their church, they had their own Black Lives Matter rally. And it was, to me, amusing because, again, amusing in the sense that you saw all white people at the, in front of this church with their signs. And I didn't see, I could not see any blacks. I appreciate it, but it's not lost on me what happened in that community. It's not lost on me that when we talk about social injustice and what we fight for here in Chelsea, communities like that don't respond. So in my mind, your ally, the troublemaker, said, I said to myself, whenever I read anything about them fighting affordable housing, I plan to be there. I will step up and I will call them out. We need to go out and say, remember when you were having this rally? Now you've got to show it. Don't just stand up on this day. Do it in your legislation, show your inclusive and such, and support. Don't fight us when we need equity in this Commonwealth overall. Don't just show up on this moment. I need to see real action on your part. When it comes up for affordable housing such as that and inclusivity, that's when I want to see you step up to the plate. And I will be there to be the troublemaker when it happens. So with that, I will now, if there's no further comment, I would like to take the roll. Counselor Naomi Zabid.
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia. Counselor Todd Taylor.
No.
Counselor Giovanni Recupro. Counselor Leo Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Calvin Brown. Counselor Damali Vido.
Yes.
Counselor Melinda Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Counselor Ymir Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counselor Roya Vazaneda votes yes. Counselor Ennio Lopez. We have eight in favor, one no, and two absent. The next order is the celebratory resolution to recognize June as the LGBTQ Pride Month and celebrate the support of the LGBT community in Chelsea. The resolution reads, whereas individuals who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer include individuals from all states, the District of Columbia, and in all nations of the world, including those from all faiths, races, national origins, socioeconomic statuses, education levels, abilities, and political beliefs. And whereas LGBTQ people in the United States have made and continue to make vital contributions and transformational changes within the United States and in the world. And whereas LGBTQ people in the United States serve and have served in the United States Army, Post Guard, Navy, Air Force Marines, and other national organizations honorably and with distinction and bravery. And whereas LGBTQ people in the United States have fought for equal treatment, dignity, equity, and respect and have achieved significant milestones, ensuring that future generations of LGBTQ people in the United States and in the world will enjoy a more equitable and just society. And whereas despite experiencing marginalization and discrimination in the United States and elsewhere, LGBTQ people continue to celebrate their identities, build community, share love, and actively contribute to the United States and the nations of the world through myriad expressions of pride. And whereas COVID-19 has compelled organizations across the globe to cancel all large public gatherings until further notice, including pride celebrations. And whereas the Chelsea LGBTQ Coalition plans to raise a flag for the fifth year in a row in Chelsea on Saturday, June 6th, at 11:00 a.m. in celebration of LGBTQ Pride Month. And whereas in an abundance of caution, the Chelsea LGBTQ Coalition will restrict the gathering to a cameraman from the LGBTQ Coalition and the Department of Public Works staff to hoist the flag while maintaining proper social distancing protocols. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the Chelsea City Council, officially recognize June as LGBTQ Month, Pride Month, and celebrate and support LGBTQ community in Chelsea and beyond. Signed, Counselor Damali Vido, Counselor Judith Garcia. Counselor Vido, you have a motion?
I move to adopt unanimity under suspension. I'd just like to make a couple of brief comments.
Seeing, are there any objections to a, this passing under suspension? Counselor Todd Taylor objects to a roll call.
No, no, I'm calling for a roll call.
Roll call vote, yes.
Okay.
Counselor Vido.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this has been going on for the past five years. Well, not the support of the LGBTQ community, but the flag raising. And so we had the flag raising on Saturday at 11:00 a.m., the fifth year that we've been doing it. Chelsea is a very diverse community, as we were able to see yesterday. We've been able to see for the past couple of months, actually, that when times get hard, we really show up for one another. So I just want to make sure that we're lifting our LGBTQ community. And also just, often we talk about these things in silos, but I really want to highlight that, you know, all of these things intersect because even in the transgender community, transgender folks experience violence at heightened rates than other communities, than other groups, especially Black transgender folks. So there's intersectionality with all of these things. And so I just want to make sure to highlight that. And I want to just lift my LGBTQ community, including the Coalition, for holding this and doing it for five years in a row and thanking all the counselors that support this. So thank you.
Counselor Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, it is an honor to co-sponsor this resolution and really highlight the incredible work of the LGBT community here in Chelsea. I love what my colleague, Counselor Vido, mentioned, these issues and these groups really intersect. And I think it was very reflective this weekend. Not only did our LGBT community go ahead and really accommodate with the situation and still hold, they still decided to go on with the flag and do it in a virtual method, but also they showed up by the numbers on Sunday to support our Black brothers and sisters. So I think there is so much power in that and we need to celebrate them, not only this weekend, but this entire year, you know, Pride Month is this year. So I invite you all to continue to show up for them, either buying masks. I know that the signal tells you right now and the members of this specific coalition are selling masks for $10. And all proceeds go to support these initiatives throughout our community. It's so important. I invite all of you to purchase a mask, be as involved as possible in any of the future initiatives of our LGBTQ community. Thank you again, Counselor Vido, for presenting this resolution. It's an honor to co-sponsor it and I hope everyone votes in favor.
Anyone else? Counselor Todd Taylor.
So again, I was also happy to attend the flag raising and it wasn't the first time that I'd done so. So I, look, we're a big family in Chelsea and we believe in inclusivity and I think that goes for everybody. Whereas maybe some, maybe not all people believe in total inclusivity, but I do. So I, again, have made my pledge that whether I agree or disagree with any political resolutions, I will vote no. But those of you in the LGBTQ community in Chelsea know my heart and that's enough for me. Thank you.
And I'll call the roll. Counselor Naomi Zabid.
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Todd Taylor. Counselor Giovanni Recupro.
Yes.
Counselor Leo Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Calvin Brown is absent. Counselor Damali Vido.
Yes.
Counselor Melinda Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Counselor Ymir Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counselor Roya Vazaneda votes yes. And Counselor Ennio Lopez votes is absent. By the way, I announced that I received a text from Counselor Ennio Lopez, who stated that he could not make tonight's meeting. Just wanted to make my colleagues aware of that. Okay, we have communications from the city manager receiving regarding the proposed budget fiscal year 2021. Enclosed, you will find my proposed fiscal budget for year 2021. The budget funds the city expenditures of $84,541,305 and the school department expenditures of $96,513,406 for a total budget of $181,54,712. This is actually 1.17% lower than we appropriated in FY '20. The total would have been even less if not for the fact the city's budget is artificially inflated this year because FY '21 is one of those periodic years where we have 53 pay periods, not the typical 52. Obviously, this FY '21 budget is not the one I had hoped to present to the council several months ago. But the world has changed dramatically with the COVID-19 pandemic and the consequences for the city's FY '21 operations are substantial. Most significantly, this budget is out of balance by $4.9 million, a reflection of the significant loss of anticipated revenues caused by the economic impacts of COVID-19 virus. Despite the shortfall, the proposed budget does not include any reduction of the workforce or layoffs. I have been successful in renegotiating certain union contracts. In other union workforces, I have been able to secure savings through attrition. It is my strong belief that further forced reduction of our workforce would be counterproductive. And in light of the size of our deficit, any savings from layoffs would be, would have a marginal effect and be more than offset by the negative impact on morale and constituent services. The budget does not include any expansion of services, but it does seek to retain some of our previous important initiatives, including the navigators and the corresponding wraparound services, Roker's workforce contract, and various summer youth jobs program. It is, in my opinion, that eliminating the social services in a downtown would be dangerous at a time when the outlook for that business corridor is especially precarious. Likewise, the Roker and Summer Jobs Program may look to be a bit different in the COVID-19 era, but they still ensure work for the vulnerable young adults and indirectly put money into the local economy via the spending habits of those receiving a paycheck. I would argue strongly against their reduction. The FY '21 budget reflects the full implementation of the new DPW Water and Sewer Departments. As you will see, the city has saved more than anticipated from this transition. I enclosed a spreadsheet comparing last year's projected savings with the actual savings in FY 2021. Please note that this budget is built upon some very uncertain assumptions about state aid to the city. Specifically, it is assuming that state school aid, both to public schools and charter schools, will be level funded, eliminating all Student Opportunity Act money and that unrestricted general government aid to the city will be reduced by 30%. But the Commonwealth has given no real direction to cities, towns, and school districts about these reductions, only ambiguous signals. If the assumption used for this budget proves dramatically inaccurate, I will need to amend this budget before the city sets its FY '21 tax rate. Finally, I concede that utilizing almost $5 million in general stabilization reserves to balance the budget is hardly optimal, but these are unprecedented times. Thankfully, the city has spent the last decade or more building up a very healthy rainy day fund. And now it is time to use it. Naturally, you cannot sustain out of balance budgets with this level of reserves for long. But if, as hoped, this is a relatively short-lived economic recession that lasts no more than a year or two, we will have adequate resources to manage through. Finally, I have included along with this FY '21 budget a five-year financial projection, which is also a charter requirement. I am prepared to provide a short presentation to the city council and the school committee regarding this financial outlook in the next few weeks at the city council's convenience. My staff and I will also be available to answer questions on the FY '21 budget in subcommittee. What is the wish of the council?
To accept the budget under suspension, move it to a conference, and schedule a public hearing.
Okay. I just want to make my colleagues aware that I have made arrangements for us to begin budget hearing starting next week. The proposed budget hearing will be starting next Monday at 5:00. We will go two hours and then have our regularly scheduled meeting at 7:00. We'll also be meeting on Tuesday from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. and on Thursday from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. We hopefully will have all of the departments completed by then. If not, we'll move into the following week and hope to have all budget hearings finished by the end of the month and have the budget approved at that time.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, can you repeat the, you said Monday at 5:00 and then Tuesday and Thursday at 5:00 as well?
That's correct. 5:00 p.m., Monday start time, 5:00 p.m., Tuesday start time, and 5:00 p.m., Thursday start time.
Thank you.
I'll leave it up to the city manager to give us an update on how he's going to schedule the different department heads in front of us. Okay.
All right. Mr. President, I'd like to take from conference three items that we can vote on this evening.
I still have a couple of communications.
Oh, yeah?
Yes, sorry. I do have an email from Miller Penaflo, Mr. Penaflo, has written to us, but he did not provide an address. I asked that he resubmit so that we can read it into the record. I have an email from Heidi Lopez Romero of Michael 75 Schrammich Street. Hello, my name is Heidi Lopez Romero. I'm a voter and resident of District 4. I'm emailing the city council to express my thoughts on Chelsea's response to Black Lives Matter movement. In the previous city council meeting, many of our elected officials discussed standing in solidarity with PLM and the injustice penetrated by the systemic racism. However, what was not mentioned was Chelsea Police was sent to aid Boston Police during the protests last week. I'm disappointed and saddened to hear this. The Boston Police were using tactics to inflict fear on protesters. Myself and fellow activists were there and can attest to this. Chelsea Police should not be associated with this kind of behavior and I personally do not want my tax dollars funding any violation of our rights. Lastly, there was an email that was sent from a Chelsea resident that was not read during a meeting. Her request was to allocate funds to other needs in the city instead of allocating funds to the police. I'm vocalizing my agreement with this statement. This does not mean I am against the Chelsea Police and does not discredit the community relationships they have created over the years. However, we should create, we should consider investing in our community outside of policing, where a city that can benefit from more fun- This does not mean I am against the Chelsea Police and does not discredit the community relationships they have created over the years. However, we should create, we should consider investing in our community outside of policing, where a city that can benefit from more funding in schools, extracurricular activities, sports, community engagement, and the list goes on. I hope the city council stands in solidarity with the movement. Unlike many cities across the nation, realize the investment in our community over police is greater in the long run. Thank you. We have another communication from Grace Augusto, seventy-five Schramm Street, Unit One. Hello, my name is Grace Augusto, Chelsea resident of District Four. I am contacting you because we are in a pivotal time in our society regarding racial and social injustice, specifically with police brutality. I appreciate Chelsea Police for being professional, community-focused, and inclusive. However, there is a movement to allocate funds into communities instead of further funding the police. I hope the city of Chelsea takes this into account. Where could that money go? It could go towards building healthy communities to the health of our elders and children, to neighborhood infrastructure, to education, to childcare, to support a vibrant Chelsea community. Sincerely. That's the end of communications. We're all moving on to unfinished business.
Okay, I'd like to remove from conference, uh, three items. The first actually, uh, would be the upstanding, uh, hundred and three thousand that goes to Dambrosio Brown, thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixty cents. Stoneman Chandler is fifty-three thousand, five hundred four thirteen. Additional twelve thousand should be significant to cover the services. I can bring it to a hundred and three thousand and ask for a roll call on the adoption.
Counsel Robinson is asking to pull out of, uh, well, conference, Conference and the Financial Committee on Conference Finance to, uh, the order for, to pay for legal, uh, legal, outside legal, uh, funds for the law department. A yes vote would support the, uh, move of free cash to pay this. A no vote would to state against state transfer. Anyone have any comments? Counselor Recupero.
This is to take the money and give it for mischievous apartments, for litigations.
This is to fund three, three different, um, accounts, well, three different uses. One is, um, two of them are for law firms that have already provided services to the city and we're paying, uh, outstanding legal fees. Another is to replenish that account so for future, um, use, uh, for other, uh, third party. Uh, if you want, I can have the city manager just quickly explain, um, what this be. This is a matter that came up a couple of months ago and that just now we're, uh, finally had a meeting on and we're moving forward.
Okay.
Anybody else? No? Okay. Uh, roll call, a yes is to transfer the legal, the, uh, free cash over, uh, no vote is to move against. Counsel Naomi Zabat.
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Todd Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Giovanni Recupero.
Yes.
Counselor Leo Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Calvin Brown, absent. Counselor Damali Vidal.
Yes.
Counselor Melinda Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Ymir Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Roy Avellaneda votes yes. Counsel Anya Lopez, absent. Nine in favor, none against, two absents.
Second, uh, order is from the Chelsea Retirement Board. And it was for us to pass, uh, Mass General Law Thirty-two, Chapter Two Oh Six. Now hereby be accepted of, of that order in its compensation to the members of Chelsea Retirement Board. It's actually their money. Does it come from the city? It's three thousand per year and they're going to forty-five hundred per year. But ask for a roll call on the adoption.
Okay. Uh, if anyone could not hear Counsel Robinson, I'll just repeat, this was a, um, a request by the retirement board to allow themselves to increase their salary from three thousand to forty-five hundred. Uh, the, in the Subcommittee on the, uh, Finance, there was explained that first and foremost, this funding comes directly out of their own, uh, funds. It does not have anything to do with the city funds. Uh, also that by just, there needs a vote by the city council to allow them this. A yes vote will support the increase, a no vote will retain, will keep them at the current three thousand dollar rate. Counsel Naomi Zabat.
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Todd Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Giovanni Recupero.
Yes.
Counsel Calvin Brown is absent. Counsel Damali Vidal.
Yes.
Counsel Melinda Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Ymir Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Roy Avellaneda votes yes. Counsel Anya Lopez, absent. Nine in favor, none against, two absent.
And the, um, last order is the CIP. And there are a bunch of the, the resolution would be, uh, the capital improvement program loan order will be last to be read. We have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven different bills that relate to the CIP.
Would you like to have them together or separate?
Uh, if there's no objections from the council, we could take, we can, if you want to read the amounts.
Okay.
And we could take them on in one roll call vote and then would have to do the, um, capital improvement program loan order, um, separate.
Okay, I'm going to read the resolution first for the CIP, the Capital Improvement Project. The city charter requires the annual adoption of the five-year capital improvement project. And the capital improvement project is an integral component of the city's financial planning and the cornerstone of our quality of life, both of which foster the economic development necessary to expand our tax base and sustain life of the community. A capital improvement program is necessary for the maintenance improvement of the city's infrastructure, possibly only in conjunction with long-term financial planning. The capital improvement program reduces ongoing maintenance costs and the high cost of emergency repair work. In this year, twenty twenty, we, the city council of the city of Chelsea, have now before us the twenty-third such capital improvement program. And hereby, accept the submission of this capital improvements program as provided for in section five dash four of the city charter. No other requirements being provided by ordinance. Adoption of the capital improvement program prior to submission of the operating budget assists the city manager in carrying out his duties as the impact of capital budget expenditures for the oncoming fiscal year are reflected in the annual operating budget. This capital improvement program for fiscal years twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, twenty-five includes projects for maintenance and improvements of city roadways, water, sewer, drainage systems, roadways and sidewalks, transportation, public buildings and facilities, parks and open space, public safety projects, and general equipment. In accordance with five dash C of the city charter, a public hearing was held on March twenty-third, twenty twenty. Prior, prior properly left, say that five times for us. Prior public notice has been properly given. The city council, ha- having reviewed Chelsea's capital improvement program, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-five, recognizes the hard work and continued effort put into this document by city's officials and does hereby adopt this program. That's the resolution. I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, oh, I'm sorry. Counsel Leo Robinson is asking for a roll call vote.
We'll vote on that last. We have, we have the bills that means, that go with the, um, the CIP program loan order. So if we, you want to just kind of give those numbers?
Yes. So the attached is, um, we have miscellaneous grants of four million, nine hundred eighty thousand. Chapter ninety money is five hundred ninety-six thousand. For a total of five million, five hundred seventy-six thousand. We have a total sum of six million dollars in the general obligation funds. And we have a sum of three hundred dollars, that's three hundred thousand that's going to be appropriate for the pay to cost of water system improvements. We have three million, one hundred thousand, four hundred fifty-nine of free cash to pay for various capital improvement project purchases. And then the sum of that, some two hundred thirty-five thousand will be appropriated to Water Enterprise Fund. The two, another two hundred thirty-five thousand will be appropriated to Sewer Enterprise Fund. And the sum of seven hundred twenty-five thousand appropriated for the School Stabilization Fund. We have an adoption, uh, order there that the, ordered that the treasurer is here, has authorized to file an application with the appropriate officials of the common law of Massachusetts to qualify under Chapter Forty-four A, the general laws. And bonds of the city authorized pursuant to this order.
Well, actually, the, the following items, we would take under one, one vote, then we'll go back to the capital improvement plan. And that the, uh, call is twenty F sixty, twenty F sixty-one, twenty F sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six. So if there were no objection, we can take your votes on, on.
And that's an answer question.
Hold on one second. Let me just organize. The Beecham Street project is not part of that, correct? Or it is?
It is.
It is, okay. Okay. We have all those. Counsel Recupero, you have a question?
Yes, is this a two-third vote? Three, eight, dollars, is that it, sir?
Yes, we did.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So the first are the eight individual.
Yes.
Okay, and then afterwards, we'll do the loan orders.
Loan.
So at first, we're going to take as a bunch the eight individual orders for those amounts that I just, uh, wrote off or announced. And then after that, we will, uh, take a vote on the loan order itself. A yes vote would approve the eight amounts that we just read. A no vote would be against it. Counsel Naomi Zabat.
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Todd Taylor.
Yes.
Counselor Giovanni Recupero.
Yes.
Counselor Leo Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Calvin Brown is absent. Counselor Damali Vidal.
Yes.
Counsel Melinda Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Ymir Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Roy Avellaneda votes yes. Counsel Anya Lopez is absent. We have nine in favor, zero against, and two absents. I'll separate these, do we do that? We now have the capital improvement law program loan order. Once again, and, uh, a yes vote would approve the total loan order, a no vote against it.
For the record, um, all city councils have signed on to the loan order.
Counsel Naomi Zabat.
Yes.
Counselor Judith Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Todd Taylor.
Yes.
Counsel Giovanni Recupero.
Yes.
Counsel Leo Robinson.
Yes.
Counsel Calvin Brown is absent. Counsel Damali Vidal.
Yes.
Counsel Melinda Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Counsel Ymir Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counsel Roy Avellaneda votes yes. Counsel Anya Lopez is absent. Nine in favor, zero against, two absent. Okay, we'll take care of that afterwards. Okay. I now have a order here introduced by Counsel Leo Robinson, request the Committee on Conference to look at our zoning ordinance in regards to development. What is the wish?
Uh, I thought that should be under suspension and at some point we'll have a conference on it and be able to speak about some things that looking at the zoning changes possibly.
Counselor Vidal.
I have no idea what that means. Can I get a little clarity on what that order means? It's very vague.
Okay, the, the order reads, request for a committee on conference to look at our zoning ordinance in regards to development.
Can I ask the maker of the motion, um, what, what the intention is? I, I still don't, I don't think I quite get it.
Want to be able to review some of the zoning and figure out if we should be making any changes to the zones. I think we have to, in my own personal opinion, look at other, other communities as most developers are bypassing Chelsea and go in other communities because their zoning fits to what they're looking to do. And I think it's time that we review some of our zoning and see whether or not we need to make any, any changes.
Counsel Vidal, do you have a follow-up question?
I guess, yeah, I object. I object to the first. I don't, I don't, I still don't understand really what we're talking about. I mean, can, can it be amended? I guess, maybe I just want something a little bit more clearer, like it, it's so difficult for us to meet during the pandemic and I want to make sure that when we're meeting, it's fruitful. And I don't really understand. It's, it seems rather vague. I don't get it.
Okay, I mean, you could object to the first reading if you want.
Yeah, let's do that.
Okay, so I'll say that she pushes it to a second reading. Okay. All right, I have a late order, um, submitted by Counsel Robinson. I read.
I'd ask to move that to the next meeting.
Okay, I was going to object, so.
No, so I shouldn't have any question. Ah, I thought we were going to give a late orders.
He can't. He's, he's, he's taking it to the next meeting.
Huh?
He is taking it to the next meeting.
Okay, so it's no other law than you've laid in the nation, right?
That's correct. It's a late order and I was going to object, but the counselor is pulling it anyway.
All right.
Okay, seeing no other business, I am now moving on to, I'm sorry, new business. Uh, we have public announcement. Is there anyone that has any public announcements?
Yeah.
Counsel Judith Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so this is a quick announcement for the residents who are watching, as well as my colleagues who are also watching. Um, as you know, this is a very important year as, uh, we have a, the president has established a special committee according to the charter and, and our our duty here as, as a full body, uh, government body, we have to review the city charter, which is actually the most important legal document in our city. So, uh, a few weeks ago, we had a kickoff meeting, so the public could get a little bit more acquainted with the members of the special committee and also for our committee to establish ground rules on what we want to do going forward. So this Wednesday at six P M., we, our charter will be, our, our, our special committee will be meeting to review section one of the charter. So we, what we've decided is to have several meetings and in each meeting, we will be reading and discussing and reviewing our city charter. Again, it's very important to the public who's watching to understand that our only duty is to review it. Have recommendations for the council later on as a package. So we invite you all to, uh, be a part of this process. Please submit any comments if you have any. We will be submitting our meetings live through Facebook and we will also be, uh, broadcasting on CCTV, trying to make it as accessible as possible for everyone. If you have any comments that you would like to share, you can go ahead and submit those on Tuesdays by noon. So we give you ample room. We, we're actually meeting every, every two weeks. So every Wednesday, every two weeks on Wednesdays at six P M., we're accepting comments on Tuesday by noon. So whatever Tuesday you want to send it, just send it to us. Just make sure it's by noon P M. So we invite you all. We will be on Facebook Live. We have promoted this on Facebook and we will also be promoting on our city website and looking to expand that promotion as well. So this Wednesday at six P M., uh, feel free to tune in as we review section one. Thank you.
Counsel Vidal.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I know that we referenced it a couple of times, but I just really want to thank the young people that organized the Black Lives Matter protest yesterday, um, hosted by the Let It Fly, uh, classic basketball tournament and Chelsea Black Community. It was a beautiful showing, um, of, it was a beautiful showing of community, extremely diverse. We saw teachers, police officers, uh, librarians and, and construction workers and people from all walks of life just coming together, um, standing in solidarity against systemic injustice. It was completely, uh, led by, by the young people. I was honored that they chose me. They said that they didn't want it to be too political, but I was honored that they did cho- choose me to be their voice and to speak. Uh, maybe some people don't look at me like a politician and that makes me extremely happy. Um, so I was, I was. So I was, I was grateful that they had chose me, but I was really proud of what they were able to organize in only, in just a matter of like two days. They decided they wanted to do this on Friday and by Sunday, we had hundreds and hundreds of people coming together. I think that, you know, a lot of times when these things happen in the, in the, in the world, people get a little handicapped, they don't know how to respond because it's been so traumatic for so many of us, that I think it was a nice outlet for everyone to channel their energy and come together for one common cause. So I just really wanted to lift the work, specifically Jade and Kyle Umemba for hosting this and all the other young people that were working behind the scenes to make it happen. Thank you.
Counsel Recupro?
Okay, my public announcement is this, the people that want to go to the Charter Review Committee are not able to go, so the Charter Review Committee shouldn't be allowed the way it's set up now because the people that can't go and don't have this access to it are not allowed to. So it should be valid void, it should be captured until it could be the regular process where people can come and voice their opinion because through Facebook and the others they cannot face. So whatever they do here is really not the way it's supposed to be done. You couldn't delay the process. There's nothing to say because I listened once before, the Charter Committee, it took two years later before it came back. So there's not imperative that you do it right now. Right now is the wrong time to do it because people don't have access, about the people that don't have access, about people, you want the people to have an input in it and this way people don't have an input.
I have a question.
Counsel Robinson?
Do we have any plans of when we're going to be returning to City Hall?
The question is raised to me about when we were getting, getting back to City Hall, when they might have a semblance of normalcy of public meetings. I think that, given what the governor is doing and allowing steps by steps, the, we're now allowing restaurants to open outdoors and I expect that if there's no regression, that within four weeks, public gatherings will then start. I fully expect that we possibly would be back after our summer break in September to have our regular gatherings. And to the point raised by a few, Counsel Recupro, first and foremost, let us remind everyone at home and my colleagues that we are mandated by the charter to have to do the review at this point in time, in the every year ending in zero. So yes, we have to do it. Now, the fact remains, this process could last all the way to December. I think that between now and December, we would probably have several meetings that the public will come, will be able to meet in what we would call normal circumstances. So I can't expect that, we hope that school will start come September and if we're allowing kids to be in school, we probably can allow adults to come up here to City Hall and go to regularly scheduled meetings, whether it be the Planning Board, Charter Review Board, City Council Board, and such. So I think we all see the little increment, incremental steps that we're taking. But allow the city manager to, you know, say, state his opinion because he's in regular contact with the governor and they just started to allow City Hall to be open, so he may have some idea of when we may have some sense of normalcy here. Counsel, City Manager Tom Brazina, would you like to address that portion?
So this really is up to the discretion of the city council. You could open up the city council chambers now. It's, we would be, the one requirement we would be limited to is the occupancy requirement of the building and the occupancy requirement that we set for that council chamber still allows for up to sixty-six people. We would have to set it up in a way that people could be physically distant, so we would do what you see in Houses of Worship now where sort of every other bench is, is cordoned off with police tape and so you're only sitting on every other bench and there's tape on the benches to show people where to sit. So you could create in that chamber right now, the ability to have a meeting in there and you, I would suggest that you wouldn't want to be at your dais because that's not six feet apart, so you'd have to figure out a way to position yourselves in there that would allow for six feet of distance. I guess this is a long-winded way of saying, you really could do it anytime you want, although I would suggest that there, you know, unless there's a pressing need for people to be here in the next month, I think waiting till the end of this month is probably a good idea. I think once the governor moves to his phase three, that's when there's a lot more confidence that you can bring people together. So just as I advise Houses of Worship to delay it till the end of this month, even though they're going to go ahead, you know, three weeks ago to open, I would say the same to you, if I, if you were being prudent, I'd probably suggest, even though you could be in that chamber, to wait at least until the end of the month. I think that would be better. And unfortunately for you, the end of the month means your meetings are over for the summer, so as a practical matter, you might be looking at some. But there's nothing that prohibits you from doing it. I would, but if you're asking me my recommendation, I would give you the same recommendation I gave Houses of Worship, not all of whom listened to me, which was, why don't you wait till the end of the?
And again, that, that also means that the, the chair for the Charter Committee could have meetings during the summer and could have meetings in council chambers and open it to the public at some point in July and August. Just because the city council is in recess does not mean that you guys get to take a vacation. Counsel Vido?
I really want to talk a, a little bit more about this, what, what Counsel Recupro brought up about accessibility. I was trying to attend a meeting last week and I couldn't be accommodated because we were in executive session and while I understand that, I think that, you know, we have to be mindful of people that just have health problems and are not able to show up. I think that these are unprecedented times and none of us thought that we would be in the middle of a pandemic, but though some of the more healthier folks might be able to go to meetings at the end of the month, that may not apply for all of us. I am auto-compromised, I suffer from sarcoidosis, a very severe autoimmune disorder, and it would pose, it would be a threat to my life if I were to be exposed. So I just want to make sure that as we move forward, if you guys do decide that you want to go back before the four phases or before doctors have cleared other counselors, that we, we reevaluate what being present means and that someone like me who does have a documented disability would be able to be accommodated to make sure that I can participate because I was elected just like everyone else and I shouldn't be treated any different because of my health. Thank you.
Totally noted. Anybody else have any announcements?
My, my only concern is when we, when we do the budget, that we need to have a public hearing and, you know, how are we going to deal with that? We're just going to have people send in comments, so we're going to actually have people come to City Hall to voice their concerns.
We will work with something on a limited basis, have people come up to City Hall and wait in that area and when they need to speak, they can one by one come here and talk to us and approach us. That's my, that's going to be my attempt next week. We're going to work it out on a test drive and then see how it goes.
I have a, for a moment of silence.
Counsel Recupro is going to ask for a moment of silence. Go ahead, speak again.
Ah, forty-five, the gentleman's name is Joey Nacigano, he grew up on Central Avenue. Last week, he was found dead in Monmouthshire. And he was a child here from Chelsea, his whole family's still there, grew up there and I'm sure that many people is, I think he was like forty-seven years old would know who he is.
Young boy. Anyone else? No? Okay, we all rise for a moment of silence.
I'm sorry, I just want to add all the victims that have died as a result of all these movements, protests.
Okay, that ends this meeting. Thank you very much, everyone.
Good night, councilors.